Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 9th, 2019 work session and public hearing of the Penfield Planning Board. Allison, would you please call the roll?
Henske?
Here.
Bastian?
Here.
Canauer?
Here.
Tiding?
Here.
Nurseinger?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Weisar?
Here.
Okay, we have minutes from both April 11th and the 25th that we need to approve.
I'll move to approve the April 11th.
Okay. Bastian and Tidings?
Henske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Canauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right, how about the 25th?
I'll move to approve the April 25th minutes.
I'll second.
Henske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Canauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right, Zach, want to go through the table applications?
I'd love to. Bob, this is your cue.
So the record shows that Mr. Canauer has recused himself in the first application?
Well said, well said. All right, so table application number one, the Wilbers' application for their expansion project at 1272 Salt Road. Recently, both the planning board and zoning board, the members that were available, met for a site tour, a site visit at the property. It went very well and staff was there present and they gave us an oversight of what, how the operation works and what they're planning to improve there, what inefficiencies they have and kind of gave us a pretty thorough understanding of how their operation works on a day-to-day basis. AJ, I don't know if you wanted to add anything from what we saw?
Well, I thought it was very helpful witnessing firsthand the process and the facilities that they have at both Penfield and their Lakeside operation. Their proposal for this here is to kind of turn the Penfield operation into something very similar to the Lakeside operation, which is a lot more efficient and...
Up to date.
Yeah, up to date. And so that was, it was definitely worthwhile going to see it.
Sorry you couldn't be there, Bill. The morning just was a lot easier for many people. But, not even where we're at.
Yeah, I've been there, I think it's great facility.
And you said you got a chance to look at it before the public hearing, even?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's challenging for any business, a business like theirs that's so competitive to operate in New York State. You need every edge you can get, really.
And really it's...
Hostile environment that we have, for the record.
Were you speaking from any experiences that you may have?
Maybe.
No? Okay. All right, so moving on from that, glad we got to do it. And again, that was a goal for both boards to do that before we really continued down the rest of the path for both projects. So we received, since your drop, we received a lighting and landscape plan that just got updated. It was part of the board's tabling resolution and I'll give you this in case you want that. Now we see contours showing around the existing and proposed buildings as well as the parking area. Fixtures have been, the cut sheets for each fixture, both building mounted and the poles, are shown on the plan in the top left corner. Did you want us to zoom in on that at all for you?
You don't, you don't have to.
Yeah, LED dark sky, dark sky compliant, pretty standard of what we expected there. They use the same fixtures at the Lakeside facility, carrying that over just like they are the architecture as well, as we've seen earlier. The landscaping, I checked our consultant's comments from a few meetings ago. They have revised the plan to accommodate his comments so that we have some salt tolerant plants out there and the properly sized caliper plantings going in. So all that looks good. They addressed several, pretty much all of your comments at this point. They're in the final, final stage of wrapping up their 60-day review with the DEC for stormwater management improvements. Again, that decision rests with them for the final design of that and we review it when it comes back in on the final plans, but they're very close to finishing that up. Also, I have responses from them. There were a couple of questions at the last meeting regarding, basically some noise generated from the site from the daily operations, one being how they use, how frequently they use their intercom system there. They've switched over to handheld radios for about 95% of just about everything they do. Really, that intercom system, the PA system, is for emergency situations only, which is what we would expect. So we have that in writing now. And then also, we kind of questioned the use of the backup alarms on the equipment. We all are very familiar with OSHA, so they have to have those on the loaders. They do a lot of their primary work with the loaders. We haven't really had too many complaints. It was really just a question, a comment that came up, again, from a phone call we took. I wanted to bring that back to the board if there was any concerns about that. Really haven't had any, so just wanted to get that in writing for you.
Okay.
So at this point, unless you have any immediate questions for me...
Maybe start preparing a negative declaration?
Exactly, that would be the next step we would recommend for this, this project as a type-one action. Would be to prepare that and that would just be part of your tabling resolution tonight, we would include it there. So if there aren't any additional questions, we can table it with...
I'll make the motion to table.
Start preparing the...
Start to move it?
Yeah.
Hi.
Bastian?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right.
I heard.
Moving on.
About 10 seconds away.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
If someone that was unable to partake in the tours last week or would like to, just let us know. We do a one or two pursuit tour if they want to see the information.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Welcome back, huh?
Thank you. All righty. Need that later. Don't need anymore. Next application is for 125 Panorama Creek, the Panorama Office Park Project. Since your last meeting, we, staff was directed to begin prepping the negative declaration. We are in the process of doing that. Since then, the conservation board met one last time to review their initial report. Now that we did receive this updated grading plan, one of the concerns of both boards was trying to preserve as much as possible out there in this initial phase of development of the site, especially concerning some of the significant trees that are there, or the mature trees that are out there, they're still in good health. A lot of those are some oak trees that are up at the south side of the property. So that has been revised on the grading plan.
This is the old one, just for reference.
Oh, thank you, Doug. So on the screen, you see the old one where they're proposing some disturbances around there. Now you see a modified or revised line of disturbance there. So conservation board's happy with that, finalized their discussion on it at this phase of it. And we have that here for you tonight as well. The only thing we put in our PRC memo that went out, I believe, earlier today was to show the necessary tree protection measures around that, which they will satisfy on the plans. The other comment that came up in the PRC memo was the thought of, or discussion rather, about at least a pedestrian easement through this area of the site leading to where the cul-de-sac, where the, where the road would terminate. At some point, depending on the final build-out of this project, when each pad comes through, since there isn't a physical road connection out to Linden Ave, there is certainly a potential for pedestrian connection down the road. So at this point, we thought that an easement might be appropriate just to have a general location of it that could be modified at some point in the future. I didn't know what your thoughts were about that.
I like the idea. So it'd be to the property to the west?
Correct.
At some, some point?
Yeah, to its frontage and an appropriate location mainly based on, ultimately it would be based on the topography out there and how you can safely get it there. But right now, we know, we know people walk up 441 to get to Panorama Trail right now and that's a state highway. So I think this project offers that opportunity to help clean that up. I've witnessed it going, going down to...
So where would these more of them?
So basically, it would, it would meet at the border there where Doug has the arrow somewhere along there. It's, again, a general location, but it would lead to where the cul-de-sac is shown on the site plan. He had it there. Somewhere through Lot 5 for the most part, or along the border of Lot 4, Lot 5. Again, these are all general, oh, Peter has a thing that you could probably add to my conversation.
Yeah, what we'll do, people are walking up there today.
Yeah.
They're walking through there today. And actually, where they cut through, Doug, could you put the aerial up, please?
Is it further north?
Thank you, yeah. Where the old ball field was, so almost where your cursor is there, they cut through in that area. So what, what I would suggest is, is let us locate on the aerial where they're walking through today and maybe we just match the easement in generality to that area. For now, until we figure out as the property develops, but, but they're using it today, so you may as well legalize it for lack of a better... Because my point is, even if you refuse to grant the easement, they're going to do it.
Right.
So we might go control where...
Yes.
Yes.
And there's a certain danger walking down 441.
Well, and that's been clear since day one on this property. That's been a request of the town for that exact reason.
I need to work around 5:30.
I see them too and I go, they're nuts. So yes, so that's, I would just say is, is our response to that PRC comment is let us, will locate where we believe they're using it now.
Okay. Good.
So we can include that in the tabling resolution tonight. The other thing I just wanted to bring up, to bring to the board's attention is that the applicant did provide written responses from their traffic engineers, which we have forwarded back to our traffic consultant for one final review of that, just to review the comments based on our consultant's initial memo. And we will have that back to you for the next meeting. And go from there.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board tonight?
I don't have any.
No.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, so we entertain a motion to table and also maybe prepare a neg, negative declaration?
That's in the works already from the last meeting. Yep, we'll finalize that for the work session.
Okay, I'll move to table.
One second.
Henske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Canauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
See you, Bob.
I'm not going to stick around for that, that's good.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Everybody.
Bye-bye.
See you, Pete.
Good night.
See you, Pete.
All right, our next tableed application is for 280 Panorama Trail. I got some quick updates really tonight for you. Last, last week, we received another set of revised plans and responses to comments based on the board's previous meeting at the April work session. The responses have been provided for you. They were provided on Friday for you. And as you'll see in there, let me just flip over to mine. We are still awaiting this supplemental of a full EDF Part 1, which was requested early on in the project. They are still working on providing a, kind of like a construction sequence plan for the fill material, the installation of the haul road and ultimately the final road that would have, that would be proposed for that site. The plan was updated with some modifications to the cul-de-sac area. And, I'm sorry, I'll just go, let me go back to that, Doug, you just had the haul road. They, they provided a grading plan for the haul road to give us a baseline for that discussion. So that is now part of the site plans and we'll continue to review that. Similar in its layout to the main road, the private road that would go in. Obviously, just doesn't require as much material initially.
You mean the haul road versus the haul?
Yeah, yeah. And then...
That's overall about a 50... Almost a 50 feet.
43 feet.
43 feet vertical drop?
Yep.
Okay.
They lowered the light poles.
352 out of the...
What's that?
From like 18 to 8 feet.
What's that?
For the lights.
Uh, the lights, actually, they've shown that on their utility plan, we can pull that up quickly. So what they're proposing, this is the other update I wanted to show on the plan. There were two things that were discussed at the last meeting, lighting and also kind of like a guide rail. So in lieu of a guide rail, they're proposing dolomite rocks every 11 feet, 11 and a half feet on center. As you can see, they're on the south side of the road there where it is the steeper section.
Okay.
And in between those, about every, I think we counted 33 feet, so in between the black dots you see are where the light bollards would be installed and they're about four feet in height, LED. We did not get a cut sheet on that, so I think that's something I'd like to ask the applicant for, to see what that final fixture is.
It's a good choice for that.
Yeah, you know the brand, the Kim, the Kim brand there?
Well, and the type of light fixture is much, it'll be a lot more suitable for this type of environment than a light pole.
Right, yeah, right, that was something you'd ask for during the discussion as well.
Look, look good.
Just need markers.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. They'll do a great, they'd do a great job.
And...
So that's a perfect solution for that.
One thing I know we'll have to double-check is, in the responses, they say they have indicated that they're going to include some gravel, about 15 inches of gravel on either side of the 16-foot wide private drive. The board had discussed potentially widening that. It's still the same width right now. We kind of, we asked them to explore, what do we take to widen it and as a compromise?
Still 16-foot asphalt, but then two feet on each side of...
15 inches.
Yeah.
15-inch gravel. So 30 inches, so 18 and...
A foot and a half on each side.
Okay.
Again, these came in Friday, so we're still gathering our comments for you guys to review as well. Just comparing them to the first round, the first round of plans versus the PRC comments that were sent out, plus the board's comments that were issued through the meeting so far. Other part, other minor change was in the cul-de-sac area that was, the grass area was widened inside. Well, it wasn't widened, but it was actually a portion of it was reinforced as an extension of the pavement, basically, to allow for whatever turning radiuses are necessary for larger vehicles, emergency vehicles or larger vehicles, whatever they may be, down in that area. It was a comment that was brought up in the PRC memo initially. Mike, is there anything else you wanted me to touch on at this point with this project?
They've moved the rain gardens that were located in front of the lots closer to the pond and we're still looking at the stormwater for the whole site, so that's some improvements and...
And overall, the pond was reduced in size.
Slightly, yeah.
Slightly, yeah. And rain gar, rain gardens come in, pond got a little smaller. Yeah, not a lot, not a ton of updates for you at this time. There was a section in the responses that attempted to describe what would be kind of...
The rest of it, how long it would take to fill.
Yeah, how many loads, yards. Obviously, I think some of the other things that need to be explored, it's line item eight in their letter. Not just myself, but the town engineer and Mike, we all, we discussed this earlier. While they're showing kind of like a frequency breakdown in how many trucks per day to accomplish the installation of a haul road, other things that we'd like to look at, look at information for, which is going to be part of their, kind of like the sequence plan I referenced earlier, accounting for, you know, there are, there is going to be traffic to deal with, there won't be ideal conditions every time you bring in a truck there. There is the time to dump, you know, and get the dump truck situated in the appropriate location, grading it out, compaction, and then doing the necessary tests along the way. So, you know, while this, while this describes the ideal conditions and kind of like a best efficiency of how many trucks get in there per day, there are things that have to be taken care of along the way that the town engineer would like to see as additional information to what was provided in the letter.
We also want to discuss with the DPW commissioner?
Yes, about what their, what his comments would be right now with regards to Panorama Trail being the town road.
Right.
So we'll look to get a memo from him for the board to look at. So you have his thoughts documented with regards to this project.
Does anybody know any excavating companies or anybody that operates dump trucks? They can ask what the average time?
I mean, we have dump trucks. I mean, we do, we do a lot of drainage projects here in town that requires fill, excavating, I mean, we're not doing major infill projects.
Do they work on, I don't know how I should ask this. Which kind of time do they work on?
Sun up, sun down. I see what you're saying, though, something that is a private project.
I, I find that to be a very, I have a house and it's connected and it's, the city takes care of the refuse, like they're the garbage people, and they take maybe 10 minutes per house. And waste management here takes maybe 10 seconds per house.
It's a claw, really does a lot.
I'm just, there's a difference I've experienced at least.
Well, it's something, well, it is something that, you know, maybe the DPW director can weigh in on from previous jobs because, I mean, we have jobs where we've had to contract a lot of work as well when it comes to that type of work. So I think, you know, we can find some outside information if that's what you're looking for to kind of compare in drafts.
Yeah, I'd like to find out if, you know, 12 minutes is accurate, or if it's aggressive, or if it's conservative, or...
Well, you have to know where it's coming from. What's the long trip time?
I don't see how that necessarily affects this. It's just like, okay, getting there, dropping off and leaving.
If they have five trucks, well, that'd be 12 minutes, no problem. If they don't, they have two trucks, three trucks, makes a difference.
Right. Right, but the, but I guess my question is, let's say you have an unlimited number of trucks at your disposal and there's a giant pile of fill sitting in the parking lot in Panorama Plaza. And so you have trucks lined up all the way up the street. Is 12 minutes per load accurate? You know, taking out all the other potential considerations. So that's my... Larry?
While you're on the earthquake ridge, Clark from Villager Excavating, he has the Empire Boulevard contract and he's set the bridge out here. Two operators, a dozer and a sheep's foot roller, because this is the closest site to get around 30,000 yards of dirt or something. The other day, I was told that Valley Echo, you know where Valley Echo is? Paul Lindenir's now. They've got this project where they want to expand and they've got another 27,000 yards of dirt. So we can check with those people as to what's reasonable. Basically, they're going to line up the trucking company, they're going to load and then it's going to come here. But there will be operators with sheep's foot and whatnot. The other thing up on that plan, the reason the pond got smaller is we are now taking the stream. The pond is not capturing the stream. Mark said if you put the stream in the pond, you see that it's counterintuitive, but now you own it. So just keep the stream out of the pond. So why make the pond bigger? It's now got a 10-foot cattail shaft, it's not as big. My backup on Wolf Engineering is, well, if I don't have as much drainage area contributing to the pond, then I want to keep the pond fresh. And they asked that the bio-retention and the rain garden be moved. And based on the contouring, those three areas kind of create a sweep that everything that is flowing towards the pond overland is going to go through those pockets and those pockets can be made bigger. Also, we put a swale, if you go to the grading plan, there's a swale on the south side. There was a little pocket down at the 208 contour, right where the propping lines come in. And we originally had a pipe there about under 100 years' storm event. It was still 0.0 CFS because of the sandy soil. You had from 208 to 299, so you had significant fall over 130 feet and the horizontal permeability was such that you weren't going to get any flow. Mark just said, well, we like, we like swales, so now it swells around to the, to the drive we call over to Lot 1, goes over to Lot 2, runs through the cul-de-sac and then runs down through the bio-retention area to pick up the under drains. So now everything that comes down that way, everything that comes off the road to the south is all got a positive swale to drain to the pond. And Sarah Klausers' comment that our original pipe was going to the discharge end of the pond, not the input end of the pond, so we swung the pipe and carefully went between the hickory trees, hopefully not to disturb roots. The other thing, when you're making that crossing on the cul-de-sac...
Larry, I don't mean to cut you off, we got to start a public hearing.
You got to be consistent of the water main separations.
Okay.
So, but those are the major changes and obviously we've got a fourth generation of slick today.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So all that, in summary, is being reviewed as part of the recente that came in last week with the town engineer.
And you'll get, no, you'll get more.
Okay.
Move to table?
Second.
Okay.
That was Bastian and Canauer?
Yes.
Henske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Canauer?
Aye.
Tiding?
Aye.
All right.
So you don't use the ground, right?
Nope, all set.
That was why we wanted to, so you didn't have to.
Joe, I appreciate that.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 9th meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming. Tonight, we have a, just one item on our agenda. It is a sketch plan. If you're not familiar with the sketch plan process in Penfield, it is an informal review of a concept that a developer or an applicant has for a piece of property. And as such, with it being a concept plan, it's not necessarily full of a lot of engineering detail. So you, you may see some missing details that would be included in an actual preliminary and final application. So the way the process works is the applicant will present their concept. The board members will ask questions of the applicant. Once we're done asking our questions, we'd like to open it up to the audience so that you can ask whatever questions that you'd like. Please address the board, not the applicant, when you ask a question. And we're, we welcome comments, that's why we're here. So Zach, with that, if you could please read our first sketch plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one. Marathon Engineering, 39 Cascade Drive, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Heritage Christian Services, request an informal discussion before the board with plans for a new childcare facility with associated site improvements on a 2.7-acre property... with associated site improvements on a two point seven acre property located at twenty seven thirty Atlantic Avenue. The property is now reformally owned by Heritage Christian Services and is zoned R one twenty. Application number nineteen P dash zero zero one two, SPL number one two four point zero one dash one dash two. All yours, Eric.
Thank you. Good evening, Eric Schaaf, Marathon Engineering, with me is Dan Stewart from Heritage Christian Services. Um, as you may recall, I was here along with Dan a little over a year ago. Matter of fact, I believe we've, uh, either second or third formal sketch presentation. We also, uh, went through a couple of workshops. Um, since the time we initially presented, um, the project has been revised. Uh, we've progressed the design a fair amount, and we did a traffic impact study, uh, that was performed by SRF associates. So the purpose here tonight is to review, uh, where we are and what we're proposing, and hopefully get your concurrence that, uh, this is a good project and we can go forward and just finalize it and move on. Heritage Christian Services, which I may refer to as HCS sometimes, uh, is proposing to construct and operate an eleven thousand five hundred plus or minus square foot, one-story daycare facility. Project is located at the northeast corner of Atlantic Road, which is State Route two eighty-six and Scribner Road. About one point seven five miles west of where we are tonight. The two point seven acre parcel is zoned R one twenty residential district. The proposed use of the daycare facility is a permitted use under a conditional use permit. The existing building on the site will be demolished. That is a change from our original presentation. Uh, the building just didn't turn out to be functional and economical to be retained and utilized. The neighboring property to the north is actually part of Penfield Central School District. It's the Bay Trail Middle School and Scribner Road Elementary School Campus. Specifically, there's a stormwater management facility and a parking facility immediately north of our property. The neighboring property to the east, which is not shown in as much detail, is Rochester Christian Reformed Church. Again, what is here is empty green space with their parking field approximately where our title is, and then the church building a little further east. To the west, across Scribner Road, are homes which front on Scribner Road. Diagonally opposite to property to the southwest is the former Shadow Pines Golf Course, which is now owned by the town of Penfield. Heritage Christian Services is a well-established childcare operator with three other daycare facilities in Monroe County, located in Grease, Henrietta, and Webster. They've been looking to open another daycare facility on the east side of Monroe County for a number of years in order to provide daycare operations to more children. A number of sites were evaluated for a number of years. Twenty seven thirty Atlantic Avenue best fit the following key site selection requirements. Utilities, they had to be pre-existing in the area. It's simply not economical for a nonprofit to run large amounts of utility to a previous, to an unserved parcel. Sanitary sewer is a must. Sewer, I'm sorry, septic system is not an option for Heritage Christian Services. They want proximity to main computer route. Why? Customer convenience and sustainability purposes. They're in it to run a business that serves the community, but still is a business. Has to be customer friendly. One of the key requirements is it's convenient for the parents. Lot size, they wanted a minimum of two acres. And obviously, cost is a consideration. Town of Penfield code regarding the maximum size of daycare facilities, specifically, it's stated in the code of eight thousand square foot. And also states that you can only serve a maximum of a hundred and thirty-five children. That results in space per child that is less than what Heritage Christian has established as their standard. We are proposing to serve no more than a hundred and twenty children in this proposed eleven thousand five hundred square foot building. That's ninety-five point eight square feet, plus or minus. And it's substantially higher than the fifty-nine point three square feet prescribed by the town code. Heritage Christian provides a high quality of childcare in a superior environment, which is a benefit to each and every child that attends. The amount of outdoor play area provided, which as you can see surrounds almost the entire facility, also exceeds the standard prescribed, prescribed in the code. We are providing over twenty-three thousand square feet of outdoor play area, which even if every child was outside at the same time, which does not happen operationally, it provides over a hundred and ninety square feet of space per child. As I mentioned, the children go outside in staggered groups. So the effective play area per child would be even higher than what I just stated. This is a younger child daycare facility. Only a small number of the children at the daycare will be attending school. Based on Heritage Christian's experience at other facilities, they projected to be less than few, I'm sorry, they projected the number will be fewer than twenty children. There are three elementary school complexes, four schools, but three complexes in the Penfield Central School District to which children could be bused. It is anticipated, therefore, it'd be a maximum of three buses that would come to the site in the morning and three in the afternoon. The operating hours of each school are the same. However, due to their differing locations, it's likely they would have staggered arrival times at our facility. Bus drop-off will occur directly in front of the main entrance of the facility. Teachers will be waiting to greet each bus. This is an operational standard established and in place at the other facilities run by Heritage Christian. Each bus will only be there for a few minutes. Traffic interference will be minimal, if any, similar to any other stop on the bus route. The Grease operation has a similar design and operation. No issues have been experienced. We have verified, by the way, with an auto turn analysis that was submitted, buses and emergency vehicles can easily enter, traverse, and exit the site. We did it with a long, full-size school bus. We have also run it with a hundred-foot aerial truck, it still works. As I mentioned, SRF associates performed the traffic impact study. Now normally, this is not done at the concept stage. This is done during preliminary and final design, but it was a question that was raised. Heritage Christian invested the money and had the study done. That report was originally done with the original house remaining. However, at that time, we knew there was a possibility that it might not work. So we asked, uh, SRF, and they confirmed, and it's a statement in their opening paragraph, which I could read into the, um, record if you'd like, that the report is valid for both conditions, including one, just as we're talking about tonight. I'm not going to read the entire fifty-nine-page report with exhibits, 'cause I wanna go home too. However, I do wanna summarize a, a couple of key points. They identified and evaluated the potential traffic impacts expected from the proposed daycare center. Based on their analyses, the results indicate the existing transportation network can adequately accommodate the projected traffic volumes and resulting minor impacts to the study area intersection. They did field observations, a gap study result, and projected site-generated traffic volumes. Anticipated there are sufficient gaps during the peak hours to accommodate projected turns entering and exiting. Obviously, there'll be some minor impact, but as they point out, drivers have the option to use both the proposed Atlantic Avenue intersection, as well as the Scribner Road intersection during the peak queuing operations. Drivers entering and exiting the project site will likely do so on a daily or near-daily basis, and therefore, become accustomed to traffic operations adjacent to and on the site. These drivers will likely adjust their travel behavior based on traffic volumes and queuing conditions, just like we all do. You get to know what's happening and you plan your routine around it. They concluded the proposed project and minor traffic impacts associated with it can make, can be adequately accommodated by the existing intersections. The proposed driveways should consist of one entering and one exiting lane, which is what we have, and be stop-controlled on their exiting approaches, which is what we've done. Again, they are the experts, I didn't bring them with me tonight, but we could. And as I said, we, we provided the full in, traffic impact study. That's the results of the experts. One of the concerns was there's a fair amount of existing trees on the site. I wasn't an expert, so we engaged the services of a registered landscape architect who went out and performed a tree survey. Based on his findings, the removal of most all trees and shrubbery on site would actually be beneficial for the overall land, overall landscape prosperity. We have included a twenty-foot wide landscape buffer around our proposed land, stormwater management facility and the sidewalk along Scribner Road. So that will serve both as a buffer slash barrier. There are two ingress and egress points, as I mentioned. One on Scribner and one on Atlantic. The driveways are designed to be two-way. The existing curb cut on Atlantic Avenue is actually going to be relocated, as you can see, that's where it was, as far east as possible. We had a preliminary discussion with New York State DOT regarding the relocation of this curb cut. They sent an email, which I provided, regarding the driveway relocation, stating they agree it would have little or no negative impact. The existing power pole is not affected by the new curb cut. We did have some discussion with the town and have clarified the variances that will be required. Minimum lot size, we are proposing two point seven, the code says five. Haven't quite figured out why, but that's what it says. Maximum building size of eight thousand, we're proposing eleven thousand five hundred, as I stated, in order to provide a superior experience for the children. We have a garage here. We are proposing that location, which is twenty-six feet from the northern property line, instead of the required thirty feet. We also have an accessory structure, this shed here in the middle of the fenced playgrounds. And these dark lines are fences so that it's segregated into different play areas for each age group. That shed will contain playground equipment. We have located it on the fence line, one foot back, instead of the required ten foot. Is there an impact? We don't believe on either of these. The northern property line, again, it's of this large Penfield Central School District campus. And what portion is it impacting, quote-unquote, stormwater management facility, landscape buffer, and parking facility? Therefore, we believe it's a de minimis impact. Similarly, the code requires a buffer to adjacent residential property lines from structures. Well, we've certainly met that. However, it also defines in the code for play areas, parking, and drive lanes. The north, as we said, it's one foot. To the east, we have one foot here for the church. Why? We've relocated the driveway as far east as possible to provide minimal interference with Atlantic Road and maximize the operational efficiency. And I've already explained the shed. So technically, we have a few variances, but is there an impact on these particular variances? We don't believe so. As I mentioned, Heritage Christian currently operates two very similar facilities, one in Grease and Henrietta. The one in Grease is at sixteen eighty Stone Road. By the way, they call their daycare facilities expressive beginnings. That facility size is ninety, nine thousand nine hundred and thirty square feet, and they serve a hundred and twenty children. Six weeks to nine years is the current enrollment, again, similar to what we project here, but services available up to twelve years of age. At the expressive beginnings facility in Henrietta, located at eight seventy-five Commons Way, the facility sizes ten thousand one hundred square feet. They happen to serve right now a hundred and twelve children. Again, they serve six weeks to two twelve years there. They do have a few in that age range of nine to twelve. We received comments from the planning department on our submitted sketch plan. No significant obstacles or barriers were identified. As a matter of fact, many of the comments were on items that will be finalized and shown under preliminary and final site plan. One comment was to provide a sidewalk from the building to Scribner Road. We can certainly talk about that and answer any questions now and again at preliminary and final. However, I just wanna point out, it's our understanding the school district does not allow children to walk from a daycare facility to the school campus, nor vice versa. Therefore, they will be bused. So we aren't going to be having our children go out of this facility or enter in via the sidewalk. For safety and security reasons, we don't wanna have uninvited guests approach the play areas, building, or otherwise utilize the property. While we wanna have an attractive facility, it's not an open invitation. Therefore, we respectfully state we do not wish to provide the sidewalk connection to Scribner Road for those reasons. I would like to point out, we're meeting with Rochester Christian Reformed Church next week to discuss the project and the possibility of utilizing their parking lot, which is approximately in this location. When would we use it? For overflow parking, that happens during class graduations, approximately four times a year. Each ceremony lasts roughly two hours. So it's not a whole lot of use. And these occur during normal business hours, Monday to Friday, as I said, no more than four times a year. If the church agrees, Heritage Christian is proposing to extend the internal lot sidewalk to the parking facility. As I mentioned, one of the requirements was if utilities present in the area, they are. No capacity issues have been identified. We will comply with all stormwater regulations, erosion control measures, and so on. We have not identified any issues at this time. There will be landscaping, um, to complement the facility. Sight lighting will be designed to avoid and control light spillage. We included a floor plan and architectural elevation with our submission. We'd be happy to discuss those, as well as any other aspects of the project, and answer any questions. I'm gonna have Dan here speak to a few operational elements in a moment. But I just wanna state for the record, we realize this is sketch plan. No formal approval vote is traditionally taken. However, we have advanced this plan well along in terms of layout and configuration. Technical details that remain include final grading, erosion control, and stormwater calculations, but they will not affect the layout. We, we have gone through it and refined it and designed it, it's here except for the final engineering. Therefore, we respectfully ask that if this board is not inclined to support, that is, let's be specific, approve this project. Let this be clearly communicated to us, so the applicant doesn't incur any more costs to advance a project that's not going to be approved. Thank you very much, Dan?
Thank you. Uh, my name's Dan Stewart, I'm the director of facilities for Heritage Christian Services. Uh, Heritage was founded in nineteen eighty-four by four families. Uh, started as a single, uh, group setting, uh, for six individuals. Uh, we've grown today to over a hundred and twenty different facilities, uh, that range over five counties in New York State from Rochester to Buffalo as far south as Hamburg. As Eric said, this is, uh, we currently have three childcare facilities, this would be our fourth facility. Uh, we did work with the childcare council to evaluate the need of additional childcare in the area. Um, and that's how we landed here. Uh, the hours of operations for this facility would typically be eight, uh, six AM till six PM, Monday through Friday. Uh, limited use of the building on the nights and weekends. Uh, staffing, uh, we would have a total of between teachers and support staff, thirty-one. Uh, the garbage, uh, as proposed, is a dumpster located in this area here. Um, going back to the building design and the size of it, uh, a lot of this is based on ratios of students to teachers to the complex. Uh, so between zero and eighteen months, for example, there's two teachers, uh, for every eight children in that classroom. So, and a requirement of sixty-five square foot per child, uh, in there. So what we also do when we're trying to build this out, we don't know necessarily if we're gonna have just two classrooms of that age group, or we may have the ability to have three classrooms, especially when you start up and build up your classroom. So we do make these as universal as possible so that we can switch one classroom, uh, for the needs and, and still meet the, uh, square footage requirement, uh, for the codes. Uh, in the building, also some support areas that we'll have, so there will be a kitchen. The food will be brought in by an outside catering service and then warmed up on the site. Uh, so there may be a commercial refrigerator or freezer to house some of that stuff, uh, warming trays and what have you. Um, along with the kitchen, you'll have a staff lounge, a nursing mother's room, a therapy room, uh, a studio, family rooms off each suite, uh, so the classrooms will kinda feed into a common area. a common area, so kids of different age might be able to get together during the day. A director's office. There will be public restrooms for the parents outside of the classrooms, mechanical storage rooms, the reception area and hallways. As Eric said, each of the age groups will have different playground areas with age-specific equipment on there. This shed here, another reason that that's set so far up there is that if I move it up off the property line without adjusting fences, it creates a hiding area for kids, and we found past experiences that presents a problem. So that's why that's located as far up as possible. The only other thing that I don't, Eric, as far as the number of parking spaces that we're proposing here?
We're reading code.
Okay.
And we can talk about your access control.
So we do have less than what the code required over at Stone Road, and it does meet our needs over there. So more than comfortable with what's proposed here. And I believe that's...
The access control in the wall.
Yeah. So in the building, we work with a, we'll more than likely have what's called a watch-me-grow system so that parents can watch their kids in the classrooms. There's also another system for checking parents in and out of the building, security system with that. So as they come in via fingerprint, they check their children in. So we've got full control on who's in and out of the building. With that, a lot of our time generations were developed off that also. So when, I say it takes typically six minutes for a parent to come in and get out of the building, that's all generated by this system. It also works as a time card for employees, you know, so it feeds a number of different information into the system. Anything else? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Could you, I have a couple of questions. You said there's, it's designed for 120 children. What is the average number of children per household that you find? Is it 1, 2, 1.2?
As far as attending here?
Yes, so...
Typically, we'll see anywhere between 1 to a family with three children attending our current programs.
So do you have an average that, you know, I think that one of the questions will be, are we going to see, is there 120 cars dropping off?
Right.
120 children? Or if there's more than one child per family, obviously?
Right. I could pull the records on what we have at others to show you what we have at our other three facilities to let you know what that would be. I don't have an answer for you, though, Adrian, on that.
Okay.
We provided some of that information a year ago, and one of the elements, as I recall, was there was a pattern. There's a couple of peaks, but depending on the age groups and the families, and obviously the different times the parents have to go to work, there's a natural spread during the hours.
Right, of when the most cars...
Right, right. So it's not going to be 120 children trying to get there at 6:45.
My question was more, well, if the average is one and a half children per family that are attending this, then you'd have, what, 80 potential vehicles instead of 120 if it's one child per family? Does that make sense?
Yes.
And there would be, instead of 120 vehicles spread out over that time period, you'd have 80 spread out over that time period?
It's more in that approximate range from the data that we had generated from Stone Road. Again, we're anticipating similar, not precisely the same demographics, of course.
Sure.
And children are born and they enter the program, they age out because once they get to a certain age, they don't, so...
They don't, right.
You know, there's a number of variables that we can't control.
Okay. Another question that I had, you spoke to pedestrian access to Scribner Road, yet I see a sidewalk on Scribner Road. Were you talking about a sidewalk that would go, say, along the driveway from Scribner over to the internal pedestrian sidewalks? Is that what you were referring to?
That was a comment from town staff, and we interpreted that as they would like that to be between the drive aisle and the property line connecting to our internal sidewalk. We presumed that the basis for that was perhaps it would be convenient for children that have, and/or parents or whatever, going to and from the school, but it's our understanding that that would be, if not prevented, highly discouraged by the school and also by Heritage Christian. So we just didn't see the need for it. And again, as I stated, we want to be an attractive member, an active member of the community, but not inviting folks just to walk in and through.
Sure. Okay. All right. Anybody else have some questions?
I had a few questions.
Thank you.
Getting back to the children being dropped off, do they typically, do the parents typically park and for this age bring the children into the building?
Yes.
Or are there some that are just a drop-off?
No, no. Every family needs to come into the building to check their child into the building.
Okay.
Deliver them to the classroom that they attend, and then come back out.
Okay, so the...
And that was what I was saying as far as our trip generator.
Right.
Based on that, we were seeing that that circle time from the time the parent pulls into the parking spot and gets back into their car was approximately six minutes.
Right, so they're all basically parking, there's no queuing.
Correct.
So in doing that, then, they really, the cars have an option if they're parking, they can go back out the entrance that they came into without having to make a U-turn because they're already in a parking spot.
Correct.
For the buses, do you envision that when they come in, they would go out the opposite egress?
I believe that is how it was discussed with the bus garage.
We had a very preliminary discussion with the school district. Their final answer was, once the project is approved and you have final site plans and a construction date, we will consider the options. However, the informal indication was, yes, of course, we'll service it. Yes, we'll determine the routes and the times, but they would likely come in one way or the other and go out the other.
Right.
And it's up to them how to do it. Operationally, they will stop, keep pressing the wrong button, in this area, obviously if they're coming this way, the exit door will be right there, which is what we would prefer. We can't mandate that, but they'll come in, they'll stop. In either case, operationally, Heritage Christian has teachers there. They know which children will be taking the bus in the morning, they go out, escort them. They know which children will be coming, arriving by bus in the afternoon, they're out there waiting. Again, this is the way they operate at Greece, very similar. It's worked well. There have not been any issues.
Okay. Is there any plans to have a generator onsite for backup?
Currently not at this time.
Okay. And I think the last question, you know, I understand why you're having to demolish, I guess, that existing house, the original plan, you were hoping to maybe utilize it. For that house, is there any attempt to maybe sell that, that someone would move that house?
We haven't explored that to great detail. You know, a lot of people have mentioned that. I just don't know if there truly is a market on that.
Right.
Maybe repurpose some of the fixtures inside of it if somebody's interested in coming through prior to it. I will definitely communicate with Mr. Gray prior to, you know, taking that down, that, and he told me before, when we bought the property, you know, do what you've got to do with it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know it would take a unique buyer that would want to buy it and move it, but there are people out there. So, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So Penfield School states that three buses would probably work based on the number of students you have in the morning, three buses, in the afternoon, three buses, correct?
What they said, there would be no more than three buses that would come in between the districts that are the schools that they have, because there's only certain areas that will bring children to this point.
Okay, so approximately three buses, could be more, could be less. Did they mention how many buses presently bring students in that area? I mean, pretty much on prime times, the schools adjacent to your property?
No.
Was it mentioned in the traffic study at all? How many school buses during their...
I'd have to look. I brought the entire thing with me. I'll be happy to peruse it. I don't believe they counted or documented the number of buses going to Bay Trail and, you know, the Scribner Road complex. The number of buses serving the facility was simply based upon the number of students that we anticipate attending school, and it would be one going to each of the three complexes that they mentioned.
I might want to take a look at it just before next time if you want to check on that. I didn't see anything indicated in it, but I might have missed it in that report. They mentioned like eight or nine cars at the peak hours. I go by there every day. Excuse me. There's a lot more traffic than that. So what about, okay, so now they're going to leave, they come in one way, either Atlantic or Scribner. So if they're going out, come in Atlantic Avenue, they got to get out of Scribner Road. That's either a turning lane or close to a left-hand turning lane. Is it going to be restricted to making right turns only?
At this time, it was not proposed to restrict that, and again, people will come in and either in the morning drop off or to pick up their child later in the day. They'll park, and they will choose based upon their own destination and preference for traffic pattern which way they egress from the project site. And was that the answer to your question, Terry, or did I miss it?
Yeah, yeah, basically, you know, it might probably be a good idea to bring in the traffic guy, and I think next time to consult, because I, you know, or at least address some of those issues because there's a lot of traffic over there, a lot of traffic.
Right, but they went out, they did the, you know, not only the paper, but there was a field observation, and they also did the gap analysis.
Yeah.
So this was a pretty thorough and comprehensive study, and, you know, that's why we've got traffic engineers. They're the experts, so we engaged them, and, you know, I mean, it wasn't cheap for 59-page report, I'll tell you that.
Right, I can imagine. But you're not opposed to bringing in them next time if we need to?
Absolutely not.
Ask them several questions?
No, I mean...
Because I think that's a big concern. So the buses come in, there's three buses, you got 31 employees, you got so many cars bringing and dropping off their kids. So is there going to be a, how many parking spots onsite?
Let me grab the paper here, but also I will point out that the employees are not all there at the same time.
Okay.
With the 12 hours of normal operation.
Okay.
And the staggering number of arrivals and departures.
Right.
That the staffing is matched to the way the population ebbs and flows, if you will, or increases and wanes. So not all 31 staff will be there. I did not bring the magnifying glass, but give me a moment.
Yeah, no, it's kind of small. That could have been a lot faster.
There are, we calculated as 45 spaces required. We are providing 53.
Okay, so again, of parking spaces. So if the parents come in, drop the kids off, and they got to check their children in, okay, if we got the buses out there, is there going to be an issue with the bus loading and unloading and as far as the, you know, safety of the kids and their parents trying to get them in the front door?
The number of children for each bus is no different than a standard bus stop anywhere in the neighborhood route or whatever. So do we all have to obey the bus safety laws and not move when the flashing lights are on? Yes. For how long? For the couple of moments that it takes. So this is no different than any other stop along their route. We're not filling up a bus with 65 children per bus. Again, it's a maximum of 20, spread across the three.
Right. Yeah, and that was my other concern too. If they're coming in from Atlantic Avenue to enter into your facility, if the bus are there, lights on, dropping the kids off, you know, the car is going to back up out into Atlantic Avenue at peak hours when people are trying to come in, you know, westbound Atlantic Avenue. I mean, it's only one lane westbound. Can they, you know, can your folks get in your facility and traffic continue westbound on Atlantic Avenue? Is one of my thoughts.
Yes, there's sufficient room here. I mean, the bus would be stopped here, so, I mean, there's plenty of room for cars to pull in and out. They simply can't pass the bus. So, you know, all of these people could get out, then they begin queuing up behind the bus. But again, that bus is not going to be there for a very long period of time. It's no more than in a neighborhood.
Is the bus there typically during peak drop-off times, or is it after the, so...
In the morning, the bus is there after the peak drop-off times.
Right, so the parent drops off the child?
Goes on to work.
Goes to work. An hour later or so, the bus comes by to pick up the child.
Correct. So, you know, the interference there, in the same way in the afternoon, the buses are generally bringing the children back before the majority of the children are being picked up. Obviously, number of parents work, number of different shifts, and each individual case is different, but broadly speaking, elementary school hours are the later school hours, well after, quote-unquote, a significant majority of the parents that utilize the daycare are already at work.
Okay, and variances, you need what, five, you said, or six?
Depending on how one counts, the absolute worst case would be six.
Okay.
The buffers to the residential neighborhood, whether you require one to each, different, but again, you know, the buffer to the north is to the church, I'm sorry, is to the school, parking lot, and to the church, one for the shed, one for the garage, although if that became an issue, presumably we could slide that four feet further south, but we just put it there because it's right next to the dumpster, and it makes a nice convenient contiguous line there. And then the building size and lot size, those are the two that we can't do anything about. It simply is what it is. But again, the shed here, operationally, could we bring the fence line down to 10, run it over and back up? Yeah. Does that make it a real pain to try and maintain that area? Yes. Does it make it an attractive nuisance for kids to try it? Yes. So we'd rather have it there. And we can't not change the fence line, as Dan pointed out, because they have found that kids will go and hide, you know, so we don't want them to do that.
And there's no way you guys can live with 8,000 square feet?
No, sir. It just would not provide a, the superior experience that Heritage Christian does, and if you did it down to the number of children, it just doesn't make any financial sense. Although they are a not-for-profit, they can't run at a significant loss and lose money to that extent.
Thanks. How do you pick a lot when you guys, I mean, you know, I mean, it didn't fit the square footage, variances? How do you, how do you pick this location?
We've looked at lots out on Salt Road, and once again, it goes back to, how many families do you have driving down past Salt Road that were bringing their kids to childcare?
Right.
Not enough to fill a facility. Same thing with the sanitary sewer. We looked at some opportunities over on 250. Price of the lots, the topography of the lots, we just ruled them out. This opportunity came up. Now, I can't say this is the cheapest lot that we've ever bought, but it worked for us, and once again, with the idea with the school right behind it, and I drive up and down this road every day also. My house is out on Atlantic Ave. I'm aware of this traffic also.
I was going to say, you must be aware of the traffic.
To tell you the truth, I'm not because of the fact I'm here at 7:05, and I breeze right through there. At 7:45, maybe when you were coming through, and it might be a completely different story, but no, I have never, very seldom stop for that light. So the other thing that also, Terry, another Scribner Road, for their queuing, has brought a loop to the northeast corner so the parents come all the way back into the school and back out so that they're not queuing to relieve a lot of that pressure also. You know, trying to relieve the pressure, and I agree with that. I'm sure there's... You know, trying to relieve the pressure, and I agree with that, I'm sure there's certain times of the day that it's a different story than what I experienced, but, you know, till after seven o'clock, you know, 7:15, I respectfully disagree with you.
That's a good time to leave, 7, 7:15, I got to agree with you.
And that's when a lot of parents, you know, for me to get to Henrietta, that's, you know, when I'm through there, so, and that's, I think, another point, is a lot of parents find that, that by me leaving 10 minutes earlier to get my kid in there and get on the road, I've saved myself half an hour because I don't wait for the buildup. So I know that was part of our experience when I went through with three kids here in Penfield.
And you guys did your landscaping, so you guys aren't opposed to meet with our landscaping consultant regarding the cutting down of all the trees on that parcel, correct?
Right, no, I mean, we had our registered landscape architect, Heinrich Fischer, who's been doing business for a number of years, he did it, we'd be happy to have him consult with your landscape person on site, compare it, get notes again, and once we have cleared the trees, we will be planting some additional landscaping again. We're trying, as I stated, we're trying to create a nice-looking facility. I think if you look at the Stone Road facility, you'll see it's a nice-looking building, capped up well, the same way with Henrietta, which is a little older facility. Grease, we opened, you opened two years ago?
Eric, do you have a printout of that rendering that you provided tonight, or I can show it to the board after the meeting as well, I didn't know if you had a?
Floor plan, or what were you, I'm sorry.
The rendering of the?
Yes?
No, 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 the architectural. I believe you provided an example of it in the application materials.
I did, we did sup, we did supply one. It was a black and white, we don't have a colorized rendering yet, but it looks like this. I did bring one, I'd be happy, it's in the packet.
Oh, yeah, that's right, not colorized, okay. I wasn't sure if you had a large printout of that.
Uh, no.
Okay.
But there was one in the packet, it's, I'm not an architect, and yes, we can have the architect come and discuss all sorts of reasons why he put the windows and the shape that they did, most of them look rectangular to me, an engineer, fine, it works.
More, it was more just for a reference for the conversation, if it could get on the board tonight to get it there, but we can show it to the board later on.
Well, we can hang that up there.
I'm good, you're good?
Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. For the traffic study, they said that there's 43 trips entering and 36 exiting during the weekday AM peak hour, with 50 entering and 56 exiting during the, I'm sorry, the AM peak hour first and the PM later. What are those hours? What's the AM peak hour, what is the PM peak hour?
Which page are you looking at?
I'm looking at page two.
Okay.
On the bottom, it says AM peak hour, you have 43 and 36, 43 entering, 36 exiting, but my question is, what are the peak hours?
Typically, peak hours are defined somewhere in the 7:00 to 9:00 AM, but let me go through and see if I can get an answer. I will point out, and I, it's been a while since this was done, a while ago, I did just happen to flip to it, so I'll come back and answer your question in a moment, but we talked about the vehicle traffic analysis at the expressive beginnings Grease, and that is, that data is in Appendix A2, and that does show that the parents, what time they arrived, the number of teachers in, the number of teachers out, the total number of cars, and then we also had the same analysis for Henrietta. So that data is there, and we could go through it in detail.
That's what you're referring to as peak hour, right here?
Right, and then? Well, I've got to make sure that's how they defined it, but the total number of cars at any one time at Grease, between 11:45 and noon, that was the highest of 38, but before that, it peaked at about 32, 35, 26, so, again, you can look at that, but that may address your answer, AJ, to try and find out if they defined this.
What I'm trying to get to is, your peak hour is sometime between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning?
Yes.
No?
Well.
Dan is shaking his head, no.
Well, I've got to define, it's SRF defined it, which is, this is a traffic study, as opposed to an individual peak.
What we supplied to SRF was some information on what existing over at our other facilities are. So what we're trying to disseminate here is?
You might need to use the microphone, Dan.
I'm sorry, if that's the same information that SRF used, or did they define peak hours as maximum volume on Scrivener or Atlantic Ave? So that's what I'm not sure.
Typically, traffic engineers go by a standard peak hour, and 7:00 to 9:00 AM is during the morning commuter peak hour, this is under Section 4, existing traffic conditions that they define it. Then they did a turning traffic movement analysis, 2:30 to 6:00 during the afternoon school dismissal, and commuter peak hour. The peak hour traffic periods generally occurred between 7:15 and 8:15 AM, and 4:30 to 5:30 PM. So it's in that window, but they observed for this particular site, it was during those times I just mentioned, again, that's in Section 4, under the paragraph entitled "B: Existing Traffic Volume Data."
So that the AM was 7:15 to 8:15?
That was the peak window for this site, but again, a 7:00 to 9:00 AM is the standard peak, and I believe it's like 4:00 to 6:00 is the standard peak. Again, traffic engineers use things so that they can talk about peak hours across the entire country, and my recollection is those are the hours, and I'm just looking to confirm that for you.
Okay, and you may not, you probably won't know this off the top of your head, but during those peak hours, the one hour in the morning and the one hour in the afternoon, percent of children dropped off and picked up?
Well, in this index, we could show you what our other facilities show on those hours, actual number of cars in the parking lot is what we show. I could probably get more data to tell you how many were staff, how many were children dropped off, if that matters, but I could tell you the total number of cars, actually, Eric, if you go to that, it may tell us the breakdown between parents and staff also, with the total number of cars on.
Okay.
And once again, this is Stone Road.
Got it.
As similar as it?
Best as we can.
Of course, as they can get to this, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I had two more questions.
Okay.
Real quick, how many fenced-in play areas are there?
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay. And the stormwater facility, is that retention or detention?
That is one of the few engineering details that we haven't gotten into. I do expect there, just based upon general soil conditions, to be a small amount of water. It'll be very similar to the, to the school district facility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would like to open up to the audience, would anyone like to comment on this? Yes, ma'am, please come on up, and if you could, please state your name and your address for the record, and address your questions to us.
Kim Fulton, I live at 1759 Scrivener Road, which is five houses from the corner of Atlantic and Scrivener. So I'm affected by the traffic a lot, not as much as these poor people in the beginning. Also, this is getting tiresome, I've been here for the other project that houses may be behind me, and then, you know, Shadow Pines. I have a few comments, a few questions. Mostly, I'm not opposed to daycare, I live across from a school, like, I'm all about taking care of the kids. The traffic in this area is what my biggest concern is. Traffic studies, I don't understand how they work, but all I can think is, I'm going to be sarcastic here, they cannot be sitting there trying to get in and out of your driveway and turn at lights and all that at peak times, because it's impossible. I can't get out of my driveway, and I'm pretty far from the corner at peak times. So that's my biggest concern. And same with the in and out. These people here, if they are going to try and take a left turn out of there, at peak times, they're not going to be able to do it, between all the traffic and everything. Let's see, I wrote down my questions. You answered a lot of them. My question is, okay, so if this is supposed to be on a five-acre lot, and, how big is this, like 2-point something?
Something like that.
2.5, 2.7? I don't understand why they're trying to squash it into almost half the size of a lot. It doesn't make sense to me, it's like, it's like they're trying to force it, and I just don't understand why we would allow that, if there's regulations. Same with the size of the building and the whole nine yards. So that would be some concerns I would have. They're asking for a lot of variances, and again, I don't understand how it all works, but it sounds like a lot. The other thing, because where I live, I don't know why, my driveway tends to be a turnaround for people, when they decide they've gone too far. I get more people in my driveway, and I always think, who's here, who's here? So I don't know why it is, but I anticipate a lot more, especially if people can't go left, they're going to go right and start doing U-turns. And I have seen traffic at certain times backed up from this light to that light, okay? And Terry, you addressed a lot of the concerns. I leave for work at 10:07, so I don't see a lot of the traffic, but if I am running late, or I want to go in late, and I leave at 7:20, 7:30, it's already ridiculous. And same, I come home at 3:30, and it's already building up. So by peak hours, I don't know how these people are going to take a left out of there either, they're not going to be able to. It's like they're going to be trapped in that little square. Big question, what happens to this lot if this project falls through? I'm just curious. And just so I'm clear, you said it was, it's zone residential, but daycares are allowed? Okay. I think you answered a lot of my questions that I wrote down. I think that's all I have, mostly the traffic is my biggest concern, and just, you know, it's already a headache.
Yeah, as you can see, it's
Yeah.
Common.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to daycare, I mean, my kids went to preschool and daycare, but that just seems like it's just cramming something small and, you know, big into a small spot. And I feel really sorry for the people right in the front. I mean, they can't get out of their driveway as it is now, in and out, so, that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, would anyone else in the audience like to comment on this? Yes, sir, come on up.
Hi, my name is Mark Northrup, I live at 1777 Scrivener Road, new to the property. Forgive my nervousness, I care about this, so, as I'm sure you all do. The, I'm interested in the property, obviously, that they're doing, Board, because the water feature for me really is alarming. You have a pond that's as large as the proposed daycare on the picture, now I know it's a rough rendering, but that, if I, I'm also a school teacher, I teach for Fairport Central, I have a little kid as well, a little girl, so I don't like the looks of the pond, you have a, a lot of trees across the street right now, which are serving essentially as a sponge for managing that water. If you decimate all the trees, create a pond, now I've got mosquitoes across the street, so it makes me really nervous, you know, that makes me worried about what's going to happen to that corner. You know, they don't sleep there, but I do, and that's nerve-wracking to me, also with kids playing around outside. I think that, I think that's probably the most important thing that we look at, is how that water is actually managed, because there's a quarry across the street, I know, with water. I know there are wetlands behind our house too, that we purchased, I don't have any intention of getting rid of that, but this area has a lot of water on top of bedrock, right? And where is that water going to go? And that, to me, is an issue. When I think a little bit about the traffic study that was done, there was a car parked across the street, I inquired as to the person who was sitting there counting cars, and I told them to leave. So I don't know if your data is right, because this is a school zone, so as a teacher, I got a little weary of people sitting there, and I essentially kicked them out, and told them I was going to call police, so I just want you to be aware that your data might not be right, okay? Especially with that, that I think is really important. In terms of the non-ecological issue of running utilities that the points were made, and the septic zones, I think that's sort of a non-issue. That seemed very strange that that was brought up, about power, bringing power to it, if you're going to invest in something like this, you're going to need a generator, obviously, if you lose power and you have little kids on site. That seems dangerous to me, and unwise, which, you know, Board, I don't think that's beyond reason to make sure that the kids are protected. 120 kids in a facility like that with 21 people on site, or 31 people managing the kids, I got confused with the numbers, but that's a little alarming. I know you have a fire hydrant on one side too, that kind of, excuse me, that needs to be addressed. There's going to be another fire hydrant along the way, right? I think that's important, that that gets addressed, I know that cleaning that out wasn't a priority of the current owners this year, so I want to make sure that's thought about in case of fires across the street at my property. General management of the property, I think, currently is indicative, it's one of my worries, while you're planning, I want to make sure that that, that the property is maintained throughout construction, because we're going to go into a period where you have little kids on site. I guess as a school teacher, I'm most aware that building something for profit, if you declare that you're a nonprofit, and you're building something to make profit, you really want to be a good steward of how you're going to do that, so as a board, I hope that you can do whatever you can in your power to make sure that things are followed through this, this company, that's. Lastly, the aesthetics, in terms of the rendering, I'm looking for more trees along the hallway, really of Atlantic Avenue, which I think probably former boards have encouraged residential areas along the berm further on to install trees. I'd like to see a berm of earth between this area, 20 feet between the road, and this daycare facility, I think is unwise, little kids wander, so my suggestions may be expensive, Board, but I don't think they're unreasonable, especially for the aesthetics of the neighborhood that this property rests in. So I'm interested in what further questions you'll give, I'm happy to write out my notes as well, if that's needed, I probably will, and send them in, because there's, this picture is quite alarming to me. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to comment on this sketch plan? Okay, any other questions from the board?
I'll see.
Do you have anything you'd like to say to finish up your presentation, or are we all set?
Just a couple of closing comments, and we're not able to specifically address some of the issues that were recently raised. As I mentioned, the pond design has not yet been finalized, this was a gross calculation, this is a pictorial representation. I think the best aspect that you can probably do is look at the stormwater management facility of the Penfield Central Schools, however much water that has, it's likely to be similar in nature, although size, that is obviously for a much larger area than we have. So this was a pictorial representation. Basically, took the area between our parking field, and after we put a berm in there, and said, okay, there's a nice pond with some curves on it. So that'll be a final design issue. There were issues, or questions raised about safety and so on during construction, obviously all of that will be followed. Whatever contractor Heritage Christian hires is experienced and will be one of the top-notch, I've worked with Heritage Christian for a number of years, and we've never had any issues. Matter of fact, though, like, can I share who your likely builder is? Taylor the Builder, based here in Penfield, they've done a number of things, they constructed the senior house- They constructed the senior housing facility, a new complex on Whitney Road, which we happen to be involved with, so I know that one, and some of the others in the area. So that is a normal and natural concern, but I would not, and I'm not diminishing it, but I would say, don't, don't worry about that element. Five acre lot, size of the building, we've acknowledged. And quite honestly, I don't know, I've thought about it, and we've had some discussion, when and how that got into the code, and what the, the objective was. We try and buffer our projects, and one of the key elements of this site is its location. Again, to the parking field of the school, no impact there, and no impact immediately to the east, because it's a field and then a parking lot for a church. Across the streets, okay, you're across the street. We can't be buffered by everything. Let's see, what was the other one I wanted to talk about? Now, the rest of them are engineering issues, I believe, that would simply be developed, and we'd be able to answer as the design progresses. Dan, did you wanna add any closing comments?
No, I think that's
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will prepare a letter.
And again, we're just, you know, again, if it's, if it's not likely, and, and a number of you have some concern, you know, now, you know, again, all it's like is a little bit engineering. We're just trying to, to get a indication, and I really would appreciate it, so, you know, okay? If this doesn't work, let us know. We'll see what's next.
That's a fair question.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and we will call this hearing closed. Have a great night.
So you can get back on air. Okay, thoughts on this?
Do you need any information from us before you get started? You wanna start with the site plan and kinda go from there? Or if you'd like to see anything from the air, you can get there. Didn't mean to rhyme that, but I did.
I guess, I mean, I don't know if we want to almost like call the question here. I think Eric brought up a legitimate point, that if there's enough dissent or concern about this, he would like to know now versus drag it out and find out later after a lot more time and expense. Myself, I don't, I don't really have an issue with it. I think that the changes that they've made are are positive. You know, personally, I like to see a lot of trees, so I'm not crazy about removing trees, but I understand, I guess. Yeah, I'm also not a landscape architect, so...
No, the survey, the tree survey they provided went into detail. I think it kinda did a better job than most that we see. It's from a very respectable firm.
Yeah.
Explaining the conditions of those trees. They are at the, the end of their health, and in poor conditions. I know I personally walked it recently, and I put some photos in the project for you, just so you guys could get a picture of the understory there that goes beyond the street view.
You know, you know what, I guess I'll buy into that. You know, growing up, I lived in a wooded lot, and my parents had like eighty trees or whatever, and almost all of them are dead now, so they've been spending big money to get them all ripped out. You know, probably should do that.
Circle of life.
Correct, correct. So, I don't know, I'd like to hear what you guys think overall, if there's, you know, if you're inclined to, no matter what they do, say, no, we don't want it, or there's light at the end of the tunnel.
I'd like to see maybe for the pond itself, if it's truly just a detention versus retention. And I don't know if there's a possibility if it's a retention that tanks for holding that under the parking lot is feasible. I guess, looking at the site, if the pond wasn't there, I'd have, I think, a little bit, I'd feel better about the project.
So you'd like some sort of storage tank facility for stormwater under the parking lot? And this area was treeed or something?
Yeah.
Okay?
I think the project is just too big for this location. And I would do not wanna see the owners or anybody wasting money on it. I mean, just so many, from the traffic study, I mean, to me, there's a lot of questions about that, the size of it. The location is just, I don't know. It doesn't fit in with that character at all, if you would, I mean, really, I mean, they haven't shown it, so I'm just trying to save my money. If they wanna spend more money on more studies, and that's their prerogative, but I just, I would not encourage them. People want to further since he asked. I mean, you know, there's nothing on the, I mean, all the experience, there's landscaping, you know, everything is, okay, maybe, you know, three buses here, three buses there. I just, I don't want them to have to encourage anymore, so if they're asking for our feedback, that's mine.
Okay.
Well, here you got a proposal where they would have a bigger building that's allowed by Congress, on a smaller lot that's allowed by Congress, with an additional two to four variances for setbacks, four to six variances total. So stating the obvious. And the traffic is a huge concern of mine. The peak AM hour, I don't know what the peak hour is for school, but I gotta believe it coincides with the peak hours in the morning for the daycare, seven fifteen to eight fifteen, I think it was, or thereabouts. So I, I can't say I'm gonna throw my full support behind it, as I can. I think it's just too intense for that corner, to be honest. I think the traffic situation is already critical, and this is, it's gonna make it worse. I know the traffic study said forty-three cars entering, thirty-six exiting during the peak hour, which, I'm trying to wrap my head around that, because with a hundred and twenty students, that's your peak hour. Are they gonna have at least two kids for every car?
Well, the question, I guess, is the peak hour, is the peak hour for the daycare people coming in and out? Or is it the peak hour for overall traffic in the intersection?
That I don't know. What they told me was peak hour was seven fifteen to eight fifteen, I think, down here.
So that would tell me that that's peak hour for the intersection in the area. That'd be my guess on that, anyway.
Peak hour for the daycare maybe earlier, because depending on who's dropping them off, they have to be aware.
Right.
So it could be six to eight to seven thirty, which
Right.
So to me, there's some critical questions we still have to have answered. You know, get more definition around them, so we know what kind of impact it's gonna have on the traffic. But it is a very large
Anybody know what P-Pod's population is on four forty-one?
We pulled this data at the last sketch plan, I remember. We did a comparison of
Because then you got that on the south side of four forty-one, the four corners, and you have Penfield Village Nursery School on the north side of four forty-one. You have Fire Hall right there. So you got this, I mean, a very, no, granted, four forty-one's a four lane. More traffic. More traffic, and both sides are trying to get in and out, and it I mean...
The number is similar, I believe, AJ, to answer your question. I believe it's near a hundred, if not more.
Okay.
And we have, we have daycares all over this town that exceed the square footage on the lot size, that, and I know you had that conversation with Jim Pastello several times about when we put that language into the code, it was a reactionary, completely honest, it was a very reactionary attempt from the town to at least put some constraints on daycares, because there was a project that came in that was asking for way too much, and we had to react to that. So pretty much every daycare that's come through here has asked for a variance on something that is smaller than the five acres and greater than the eight thousand square foot.
Where'd they get the eight thousand?
I feel like we reached a little bit. It predates me, and it, when did, this was the
I'm gonna say, late nineties, early two thousands.
Because to me, it seems small.
Yeah, that's why
Twelve thousand, fifteen even, depending on the size of the lot, it should be geared towards a lot.
And that's why it's not uncommon to see that variance granted.
I, I think that, based on this, we, that should be readdressed.
Yeah, I agree.
I just, yeah, I agree, maybe somewhere down the line, but this is, you know, residential areas. I mean, it doesn't fit in there. I mean, there's nothing around there that you can really compare to it.
Well, you gotta remember that it is, it is a conditionally permitted use in a residential zone in District Two.
Right, right.
I mean, we, that code is why they looked at this site. If we said we didn't want daycares in residential areas, we would've said, go to GB, go to LV, go to somewhere else.
It's what the initial thought was.
It's somewhat residential. I mean, to the north, you got the school, to the direct south, you got the old quarry.
Current quarry.
Current quarry.
I'm sorry, current quarry. Then to the
East, the church.
Southwest, you've got
Former golf course.
It used to be a golf course, and then to the east, you got the church. It was kinda surrounded by non-residents, except directly west and north of it.
Right, right.
And those uses aren't anticipated to change anytime soon, either.
The school and the church and the quarry and
Quarry for sure, yeah, school for sure.
It's got that going for it, I mean, it
There's no question there's gonna be an impact on that area.
I think, I think Bill put, made a very good point about, and I apologize for not having an answer for you today with regards to the traffic impact study that was provided for this as a follow-up to the first sketch plan hearing. But I think it's a good point to clarify the numbers and the peak hours, that just to have that in front of you before giving the applicant any direction about whether this proceeds to a preliminary final application or no.
Now, you're back to the original question, if you wanna spend the money to do it.
Yeah, if I, if I'm hearing, Terry, you're a no. Bill, you are a no. You're on the fence?
I'm on the fence. I need more
Bob, you're on the fence? Okay. I, I could see myself voting yes to a project for this. So my feeling is, with it being this close, we need Jim's input before we make any declarative statement that way, because it's, it's too close, but
I mean, I think there are some things they could do to help alleviate traffic concerns. For the Scrivener Road, right out only, no left turn. Things I
Or, or no left at certain hours.
Or, yeah, something
To me, there's
Tough to control that.
The
Some additional
We have, we have busy times for a short period of time every day. So you can say traffic is absolutely terrible, but traffic is absolutely terrible from maybe seven fifteen to eight fifteen, or something. Or potentially less than that. I mean, if, you know, when my kids were at Bay Trail, and if we had to drop them off, I mean, our kids took the bus most of the time. We weren't one of the parents that, oh my gosh, I gotta drive you to school every day. But, you know, there are a lot of buses that stack up there. That is something that, if that's not in the traffic study, that's, then, that needs to be revised. That is a very true statement, because the bus takes up, what, three car lengths? Something like that, so, and they don't move as fast, and they're more careful than regular drivers, and so it takes forever for them to get through. But
Well, so you have an intersection controlled by
How much of a delay does it cause? And let's say that you have, let's call it eighty cars coming in through, from a period of six fifteen AM until eight, eight thirty, when's the last kid arrive? Roughly?
Nine thirty.
Okay, so, and you start getting them there at six, six fifteen? Six or six fifteen, maybe?
Six o'clock, we open.
You open at six? Okay, so you have staff arriving ahead of six, probably five thirty to get things opened up and started. So there's some vehicles showing up at five thirty, where I'll guarantee there's no traffic. Not a ton of traffic on Atlantic or Scrivener at that point. So there's, let's say, ten cars showing up at that point in time. Then at six AM and they stay. Six AM, you have parents starting, and if it's six to nine, and it's a hundred and twenty over three hours, that's forty an hour roughly, if it's all even. And they're probably dropping off, you know, more at specific points in time versus in even spacing. But even so, you're, you know, the hour between six and seven, you're gonna have a fair amount. And when the, the real traffic starts at Bay Trail and at those intersections, I'm gonna, it's seven, seven fifteen to eight, trying to remember when. When does Bay Trail, when does Bay Trail actually
The old school usually starts around
Trying to remember, what time does it start? Eight, eight ten, something like that?
Yeah.
I think it's around eight, or after eight.
So, so that's gonna be a peak time for buses. Buses are gonna begin there probably seven thirty to eight o'clock. Would be the buses, right?
Least.
Well, they gotta do the high schoolers first, then they come back, pick up the middle schoolers, and they go on and do the elementary schools, right?
They're lined up. I don't know how many buses there are, I can't even count them. I mean, between the cars coming and drop off the kids, the number of buses, they're
Yeah, it's crowded, it's, but it's all in that period of time between seven, I'm gonna say seven forty and eight oh five.
Can I ask a question on the other?
Sure.
Dan, does it, do you offer a half-day program where there isn't as much traffic potentially in the afternoon, or any given peak hour, where, or is it a full-day service usually?
I don't, whether they do or not, and I think, once again, if we go back to that traffic study and show what our, it shows the ins and outs there, will, will show us that there are quite a few people that are coming in at ten o'clock to drop off their kids. I don't understand it, but that works in their schedule. Some parents, we call it parent guilt, and, you know, you didn't want to have your kid the first one there and the last one picked up, so mom may drop off and dad might pick up. So I think it's a wide variety, and you would be happy to share, because you have that information.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the appendix, which we can talk about. At Bay Trail, thanks to
Doug, would you pull
It starts at eight ten.
Okay, that's right, you're right, it starts at eight ten.
It's in the application.
Memory's not that bad. I guess, I, I think it behooves us to talk it through, and I don't have any skin in the game with this. But we should look at it as rationally as possible, and if we come to a conclusion that, you know, it's too much
The original question was, whether or not you want them to spend the money, correct? Eric asked it, you asked it, and that's all.
Yeah, and that's a fair pin.
I mean, yeah, you wanna bring in the, you know, traffic consultant, bring in the landscaping consultant, about the trees, and all that.
The Scrivener starts at eight fifty.
Okay, thanks, yes.
I have come through four forty-one, five mile line road during the peak hour.
Me, too.
And generally don't, but sometimes I do, and I don't think I've ever seen more than two or three cars in the queue trying to get out of P-Pod to head west.
Cur
And there's not a lot of eastbound traffic at that time compared to westbound.
Right.
And without fail, somebody lets them in.
Right, right.
You stop and you let them, I mean, that's just
Well, and there's a lot of traffic heading east, turning left into Penfield Village.
Yes.
And they may stack up for twenty seconds or something, and then someone lets them through. And that's two rows of cars
Yep.
that have to stop and let them
There's a lot of traffic there, and granted, it's four lanes, but it flows, flows very nicely.
And you only got the two lanes
Unlike Scrivener, Atlanta. I mean, people actually go down, when there's I do, every day. And when there's cars and buses out there, people actually drive down the opposite side of the street to get around the traffic to stop, to get in the left lane. to get around the traffic to stop, to get in the left lane. And now that's where the driveway's gonna be exiting on the Scrivener Road. And that's a problem. I mean, the turning lane is too short to begin with, they handle all that traffic. And then bumper to bumper, like that one lady said tonight, traffic is backed up all the way for Atlantic Avenue as far as you can see, which is a five mile line road past that, so. Are those peak hours? Yeah, I'd say they're peak hours. That's where most of the traffic is. I mean, people going to work, dropping their kids off, you know, the buses, you know, I don't know how many buses they got and then, you know, how many cars are there, just dropping one or two kids off, it's, it's crazy. And they got three entrances to those schools and they're backed up into the school. You know, people won't let them out and you get somebody to let them out and like you say, the, the, the drivers get aggravated, drive down the wrong side of the road. To me, that's like, wow, I don't know, I mean, that's a bit of child runs out on that road up there.
You can't predicate decisions that people break the law either.
No, 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 that's nothing to do with that, I'm just saying, they stash, you don't, you're talking about four forty one, two fifty. I'm talking about facts, you know, I'm there every day, that's why.
Still?
Just the facts.
I don't know, the other day I called you, you were just waking up at noon.
That was my nap.
Wow, that's pretty bad.
It's a tough one.
So, are there concerns other than traffic and traffic generation and, uh, additional congestion type concerns with, with this that you see at the moment or that are, uh, not able to be mitigated?
Traffic's my big concern, the other concerns I have are easily addressed, or generally, I think is the worst. Other, you know, and the other question that I have, I don't know the answer to it, is are there any plans to approve this intersection by the state?
Good point. Uh, no, I mean, not at this time, but I, I'm glad you bring that point up. This Scrivener Atlantic is controlled by the state.
Right.
I mean, they have provided that impact statement or the impact study to the state. The state has responded with email correspondence that was provided to the board as well. The fact that they're proposing to move the Atlantic's, uh, curb cut as fur- further, far east as possible satisfied the state. The state did not indicate any improvements from this project necessary, uh, whether it be, you know, giving, opening up that turn pocket on Atlantic a little more, so you have a little more width if you had to make a left turn in. Um, they didn't indicate that and then they obviously understand the conditions at Scrivener Atlantic and we believe that they're gonna start, um, at least doing some more frequent traffic counts there to understand the intersection more. I, you know, and we've also seen this over time where, um, and, and Terry, we talked about this earlier, uh, that Atlantic Five Mile, that intersection is one of the worst in town and the state is looking at that and there's potential to improve some traffic conditions here, um, by alleviating some traffic on, at least improving how traffic flows on Atlantic. Um, from that intersection is when the state begins to do that work. They already started doing some ground tests out there at Atlantic Five Mile. Um, so I think a lot of it hinges on those conditions as well, how that intersection could improve in the relatively near future, uh, with, with regards to traffic timing of that light, how many cars are queued up in all four directions, so on and so forth. Um, AJ, you brought up, I, I think everybody talked about the right in, right out on Scrivener. It's something that would have, that could be examined. It all depends on that turning motion for a bus because obviously a bus does have to leave there at some point. Um, if they're coming in, it would force them to come in the Atlantic side, no matter which way they're coming from.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they would have to route it accordingly, uh, to get a bus back around if it had to go east.
Yeah, I mean, if a bus is coming from Scrivener heading south.
I think they would route it.
To me, a right in, right out on Scrivener makes no sense because you're forcing the bus then to go make a left on Atlantic into the site.
You could do, uh, you know, right in, right in, left in, right out. I don't know how you control that though, I mean, that's, without, you need a physical improvement to prevent someone from turning left out. And we, we have those where it's a right out only and a left in and a right in.
Yep.
Do you, do you think it'd be helpful to have an aerial image of this area every fifteen minutes?
Like drone shots?
On, from six fifteen to nine o'clock, yeah, just a still.
I mean.
And then we could see what the queues were, what the backups were and maybe that would.
I had never had to go through that. Have you ever seen that?
No, I haven't.
PC TV.
No, we don't send those guys off with that.
Somebody who does.
It's not their job.
I thought, I thought, uh, planning could use it too.
We, I don't believe we have the ability to use a drone for our purposes here. That's something the applicant would have to provide.
Okay.
Uh, it is their project after all.
Okay, so then maybe that's something we might, if you think it would be helpful. You know, if the traff, I don't know, I'm wrestling between the traffic study and it's hard to know unless you're there walking around the site on a particular day and know what all those roads are doing at any point in time.
There's something I could offer, um, it just sounds like everyone wants a little soak time on the traffic impact study uh, with regards to this and their other facilities, but we do have a traffic consultant that could review that traffic impact study, provide a, their summary, um, with respect to that, or if there's more data necessary, uh, for that. Um, just to help give a overview of what's being presented in that information. I, I apologize for not having more information myself tonight, but, um, you do have that option. Um, I don't think it's stretching the project too much because we do have a work session in two weeks, so.
So.
I don't know if you would allow it, but we'd be happy to have my traffic consultant here and go through an intensive Q and A. That, okay, when I represent the traffic study, I'm doing what you've done, I read it, I did not perform it, but we'd be happy to have SRF come in, they can discuss what they analyzed, what they inferred, what does it mean? You ask, oh, what about this, what is the P? So if you're open to an interactive Q and A discussion or whatever you wanna call it, we'd be happy to have them here.
Negative.
And they could answer, and they're the experts and all I can do is represent their opinion. I'd rather it come from them and you'd be, they'd be happy to interact with your traffic consultant as well if it's a meeting of the expert minds.
It's not, that's certainly possible.
That potentially would be helpful, would you find that helpful?
Yeah, definitely.
I think Jim would too if you're here, I'll speak for Jim.
Again.
So, the, if, if you, um, you know, we, we, I think that everyone can agree that there will be some sort of impact, whether it's, and the extent of that impact is what's either considered by people to be acceptable or unacceptable. And, um.
As interpretation.
In, in, right, um, in terms of the appropriateness of, let's say casting traffic aside, the appropriateness of a facility like this here, next to the school, next to the church, across, you know, where they've located this, uh, on a commuter route for people to drop their children off on the way to work. To me, it does make sense in terms of where, you know, location wise.
It's a prime location.
I still think it's a bad location, just for the size. Yeah, okay, an eight thousand foot maybe facility, but it's a bad location for the size of it. For like that, for dropping kids off, yeah, but for how, dropping how many kids off, I would agree with you on that. For the size of it, at that location, no.
And is it because of the traffic or because of something else?
No, cause, uh, well, no, the traffic and the size of the, the application. I mean, just, you're just trying to bring more people in there, you know, in that small piece of property there and try to put it in there, yeah, so, both. And then, you know, I mean, just the magnitude of the vehicles, you know, and we're, we're just really speculating and really and the number of kids and how many cars are dropping them off. Like somebody asked, asked the question earlier, like was it one or two kids are gonna drop off? I mean, it's still a lot, a lot of cars, buses and maybe three, in the morning maybe three, yeah, through, could be more.
Did, did express it wouldn't be more than three during the public hearing? School district, the, the school district wouldn't send more than three.
Yeah, but it's.
I think, no, that the, the primary concern is the, the drop-off traffic. The buses are, half the time they're gonna send a small bus probably to these locations. I don't see them sending even a large bus coming here.
Yeah.
Um.
And that's three vehicles.
I see buses with three people on it, big buses.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, it is what it is.
We order four little buses every year.
I think, I mean, half the problem in this area is driven by people dropping kids off at school, period, because I'm sorry your kid can't get on a bus, God forbid you take the bus that's provided to you as a taxpayer. Um, my personal opinion, but, uh, you know, I think the biggest concern that I'm hearing is, is the amount, is, is the, the rate and, and quantity of the drop-off traffic from the families. Not so much the employees or the number of buses, it's just people getting in and out of the site. And then understanding that data more clearly in their traffic impact studies and know, all right, what are these numbers reflecting, uh, when you did that study?
Right. Okay, I think we've gone around and around with this. You see where we are at the moment, um, personally, I think that, given the nature of the opinions, uh, it makes sense for us to talk about it in a work session because twenty percent, you know, you need three votes, uh, for something to pass.
Right.
And you have, you know, you got a no, you have probably yes, and you have two maybes.
And one TBD.
And one unknown. So you, to me, you need to find out what the unknown is feeling.
And like I said, if, if, if we'd like to get into the traffic study, I think it makes sense. We'd be spending that money, but I'm assuming you can say yes. We did, well, the traffic is all.
Not, not the drone, I'm not fronting the drone for two days. And to let you know, this traffic study was done on a school day. Um, and I'm not sure if the gentleman sat there all day, I believe they set a camera there and then, or with a camera.
I would like to, something that I would like to know would be, was he kicked out by the neighbor? Did he leave, uh, you know, was?
What the team was doing home? Oh, I'm sorry.
It could've been PM peak hour, it could've been PM.
PM forty-six.
And again, those questions, if that's the answer, we'd be happy to have.
Right, right.
And they'd be able to.
And we can accommodate, we can accommodate that.
And if you're open to a roundtable discussion with them, you tell us when we'll make an amendment.
What, I don't know if I necessarily call it roundtable or.
We go around it in, in precision.
Yeah, we'll get the lights. We can have the bright lights.
If you hear everything.
So, yeah, I mean, if we, if, um, if that's something that, uh, uh, we can have the traffic consultant here for.
The twenty-third.
The twenty-third.
Yeah, like two Thursdays from now, yep, that's six thirty.
Yeah, work session.
It's a pure work session, there is no public hearing.
Correct, it's a work session meeting only in this setting, um, typically would, just kinda right where you are, you can bring it up to the table, we can have that conversation, um, just to start the meeting.
I'll make sure that, um, Amy or whoever comes, Steve, will bring the field notes, they'll be able to answer and dive into as much detail as you'd like and that's why I meant by the roundtable, interactive, and we can do that.
Yeah, and we, we typically, like, I don't know if AJ covered it, but it's usually, you know, anywhere from, you know, five to fifteen minutes. We try not to drag it out.
Right, right.
Then, once we're here, we're here.
Yep. Just try to get those, just try to get things clarified.
Okay.
Uh, that's that item, I have one other item to talk about tonight.
Yeah, so we're not gonna make any motions right now, uh, because.
Yeah, no need to table action.
No letter, no.
It's not an actual thing, so we're not moving to send a letter right now until next time.
Okay.
We'll just coordinate, we'll coordinate for the next meeting.
Yeah, what I'd like us, the four of us to do is try to review the traffic study, learn as much as we can over the next couple of weeks and.
Now, will, will Jim be there next time?
Um.
I haven't heard that either, yes.
But before you schedule, before you schedule, uh, you know, the traffic consultant to come with you, we should, we'll make sure that we know.
We'll confirm, we can do as many times as we want, but also in respect, your efficiency and, and your tech itself.
Right.
We'll certainly reach out to him, I can tell you.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, one other item.
Ken, Penfield Square?
Yep, we gave you a copy of their letter request in your packet materials today, Penfield Square. Uh, recent project approved by the board, um, in the mixed-use district. They, uh, they came back close for the request after doing some floor plan layouts in the independent living building, which was approved at a hundred and thirteen units. Uh, they reconfigured walls or found a tiny house or something to squeeze in there, but, uh, they're coming back requesting an amendment to the board's resolution where the first whereas statement, uh, defines and spells out the number of units and they're requesting one more unit. So we listed one thirteen as represented by them during the process. They've discovered that they can get one fourteen in that building, so an increase of one unit. Um, asking for an amendment to the resolution to document that if the board is, um, accepting of, exactly inclined to do so.
I have no issues.
I have no issues.
We would just, I would just take a vote then, if you amend the resolution documenting.
So I make a motion to amend the resolution to allow one fourteen versus one thirteen.
Very good.
Hetsky?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
Heidi?
Hi.
Okay.
All right.
So with that, we all have a little bit of homework to do before the next meeting. Um, I'll also try to get some PRC, I'll, I'll, I'll ask the applicant to give us some responses to the PRC memo as well. And, uh, we'll see you on the twenty-third.
With that, we will, uh, call meeting closed and adjournments.
Okay.
Have a great night, thanks for, uh, your time and attention and.
Yeah, in a couple of weeks.